Okay, it's seven o'clock. We'll call a regular meeting by Buchanan City Council order. Ask if you'd join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you. We're expecting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have on our guest list Michael Levesque. If you wish to speak, please do so.
Yes. As we know, tomorrow will mark a week since the tragic events that happened in Connecticut. And given that terrible tragedy in Newtown, and also from the tragedies we've suffered in our city the past six years, as I was thinking the past weekend and saw the mayor and discussed this idea with him and a couple other council members, I feel it would only be proper that we as a city send a proclamation or a letter of sympathy to Newtown to let them know that they are not alone and that they have continued to be in our thoughts and prayers from our own city of Buchanan.
Michael, would you draft a letter?
Certainly I can do that.
Any objections?
I think it's a fine idea.
I think it's a great idea.
Very good.
Will you sign it, Mayor?
Aye, certainly will. Aye, certainly will. And, Michael, appreciate your concern. Thank you for your suggestion.
You're welcome.
Certainly welcome. Michael, in your letter, say on behalf of all the citizens of Buchanan and Upshire County.
Certainly will. Well, David, you can write it if you want to.
No. He's my neighbor. He might come over and say, hey, what do you think of this? I've asked his opinion.
That's a good idea.
Thanks, Michael.
You're welcome.
Department Board reports, Michael Doss, the administrator.
So I found my way on the agenda next to Clement. So a couple things to talk about just finishing up the end of the calendar year. Just updates on, again, related to the minor boundary adjustment application that was submitted to the commission. We've got word back that they're going to have a public hearing on our annexation request January 24th at 10:30 at the courthouse. And then on the Brushy Fork Conference Center at the National Guard Armory, we are just finishing up our community facilities loan application. We expect to have that submitted by early January 2013, following our building commission meeting I think we're having on the 3rd of January. And 6:30, yes. That's all for right now.
Questions for Michael? Chief Gregory?
The West Department is to be busy with a variety of things, particularly with the holidays of August. Just one thing to be accountable on. As you recall, I had spoken to you about the program that we were working with the Buchanan Upsher Middle School Gifted Class. We finished up this program this week with a focus on drugs and alcohol and effects of such, tying up what the unit was about with the culmination of our mock trial, which was just a couple weeks ago. It was a very successful event in itself. Today, a substance abuse town hall meeting was held at Ingle Hall of Chapel Hill, and the Gifted Class had the opportunity to attend this and provide some feedback relative to their thoughts. So over the next two, three weeks, we'll be going through some of the data and looking at some of the thoughts that they were able to write down and share with the facilitators at this event. So all in all, a very successful program, and we hope to continue this partnership long range in the future, even have it develop into other things as we are at the planning table. And that's all I have unless there are questions. Just like to wish everybody Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Any questions?
I'd like to commend you for your work you're doing with the schools and the youth. We all know that the youth are the future, and we have to train them to do things right. And I think you're doing fine as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Sam Ledlow, City Engineer.
The sanitary board did meet this afternoon. The first item on the agenda was a report from Richard Trent on the financial status of the board. And he made a pretty positive report that in spite of a fairly significant improvement to our assets, which was the Bell Press, our cash flow was still very positive. We talked a little bit about the NPDs permit and the appeal. We were scheduled to have a hearing on the 13th, and that has been canceled, or postponed, rather. And it hasn't been rescheduled that we have a date as of this point. We are still actively engaged in the new permit, even though we're protesting it. And we had considerable discussion about several plans under the compliance schedule, reports and plans that we're obligated to submit. We're submitting reports on the toxic pollutants and how we're addressing them and the oxygen demand parameters. And the plant storm blower keeps us busy doing a lot of reports. We, in cooperation with the Upshire County Development Authority and Region Seven Planning and Development Council, are attempting to undertake a project that would help us do infill and extension in the western part of our service area, both in Brushy Fork and out to Weston Road. We've had a lot of inquiries in both of those areas for extensions beyond Rennie's Mobile Buildings where our line ends, and for infill. Eagle Street, Nobu Edition, back on the Weston Road, closer to town. We have an interceptor, but we don't have a lot of collector sewers. And it would be very beneficial to provide greater service. In many cases where we've had inquiries, we've been very interested in providing service, but it's too costly for the individuals to support. I know a business developed a little bit out beyond Rennie's Mobile Buildings and came to us and wanted to do an extension, and we did a cost estimate. It was $200,000. It was just more than a business that was developing could support. So we are participating and cooperating with that effort and are advertising with the support of Region Seven Planning and Development Council to employ a consulting engineering firm to help us develop that project. We've been actively working on a sewer extension, talking about infill in Brushy Fork to three customers, including the Wayside Baptist Church. And in Brushy Fork, a commitment that we made in the '90s when we got right of ways in that area will help us add, hopefully, three new customers. We are well aware of the situation on Spring Street, and that the street is closed, and we have a problem with the combined sanitary and storm sewer. And we had to wait and get the cooperation from the water department to work on the water line that was right over top of the sewer. And they've done that work, and hopefully, conditions permitting, weather and other activity early in the new year, we'll attempt to make that repair. We have three pumps, pulled for repairs, one at Elias and one at East Main. They're pretty major stations that we have a spare pump. So the two stations are fully operational, but the spare pump is at a repair shop. We had an employee go to a training session and pass the test and has received his class two license, Donald Tenny. And we hired two people on the maintenance crew at the plant, Dave Currents and Jason Tenny. One of them's been working for three weeks and one for a week, and we're very excited about their performance. That was all at the meeting.
Questions for Sam? Thank you, Sam. Jay, do you have any updates?
Mayor, I was just going to update you, everybody, on the Phase One Archaeological Survey that was conducted December 9th through the 10th. They did their field portion of it, and then the first part of the last week, they did the office work and the findings where nothing was found. And we're good to go with the project. We have a letter in hand assaying as such, as well as the reports that have been submitted to SHPO. And I'm hoping to hear back from them before the end of the year to let us know that it's okay for us to proceed. And that's all I have.
Any questions for Jay? Jay, thank you. Tom or Kelly?
From the Water Board update, recently, we've issued two boil water orders within the municipality. These are protective measures, guidelines from compliance monitoring through the Bureau of Public Health, a catch-all for public safety, public protection in drinking water. One was issued on a main line break. The other was a planned outage, which Sam just alluded to, down Spring Street, part of Main Street. We had some customers out of water, and we had them on boil water as a result of that. And that's just a requirement that we have to do for compliance monitoring, to stay in line with the Health Department guidelines. As a part of our water loss program, Jay and Kelly and I, I believe in August or September, may have been offered to attend a water audit class down near Charleston to get some training on some ideas to help us tighten up our water loss in our distribution system. And as an ongoing effort and expansion of this program internally, we've been going out and listing on inactive services, or services that have no meter settings and possibly have had no customer usage, a year, two years, three years. Who knows how long they haven't been in use, but the water tap is still there. So they've been going out and with listing devices or physical checking to make sure that we're not losing water in those areas that would help us better get our loss control in hand. They continue changing water meters to keep them current, three-quarter to five-eighths meter or five-eighths to three-quarter meter, required every 10 years to be removed and tested, reinstalled, or you can put another one in, whatever they choose to do. This time of year allows the crew opportunity to go out and maybe do that a little more than construction, so they can have a little more time to do that. Kelly and I attended quarterly West Virginia Warren meetings. We attended one of those last month. West Virginia Warren is a statewide water and wastewater response network, storms, such as the Durecho and the snowstorm. It encourages and trains utilities to work with each other. Many times, we can pull ourselves out of the bind before state or federal assistance is available, just by simply reaching out with another utility that may have something that we need. So we stay actively involved in that network. And Buchanan, just recently, in the snowstorm, actually helped our PSDs again with some issues they were having with power to keep our tanks full, keep their pumps running. So that's a good program that we participate in. The last thing I would bring to your attention is a raw water pump at our intake structure has a variable frequency drive, and this drive allows us to decrease the flow of water for maintenance purposes of the plant. It allows us to slow the water down on some equipment we can take offline for preventive maintenance or long-term maintenance, whatever we choose to do. This thing has been problematic. It kept kicking off, and we'd have to go reset and reset. And we finally had to have it removed and sent to the Huntington area, to the contractor who sold it to us, and they're really having a difficult time troubleshooting and determining what the problem is with it. So in consulting with Jay, we've pretty well determined that they're not going to be able to satisfy our requirements in getting this thing back up and running. So probably early next week, we're going to go down and pick it up, maybe look at somewhere else, see if we can get some assistance from another vendor, and take a good strong look at that and using that in our service system. And that's all I have in there.
Questions for Tom?
Is that valve, that variable speed valve, does that link to a PLC, or is it some computer issues with that? Or is it?
No, it's a self-supporting unit that bolts to a wall, and what it does is drive a 50-horsepower motor, and it changes the speed, which changes the flow of water. So it's self-sustaining, everything it needs is within its own cavity to make it work.
Thank you, Tom. Rich Kleiner?
Wanted to briefly bring to your attention council members and also the public. The Airport Authority, Buchanan Upsher Airport Authority is in the process of developing a long-range plan, five, 10, 15, 20 years from now. And I brought a couple of charts to indicate the two major aspects of the plan. And I realize you can't probably see the detail here, but if you're interested, we can certainly spend some time after the meeting or at some other time at your convenience. This is what is referred to as the South Apron, for those of you who are familiar with the airport. The windrows is up here in the end on this corner. The runway is off the edge of the chart and just a little bit to the north. But the existing buildings are the snow removal building. Here, three box hangars, large, relatively square buildings that house aircraft and HealthNet, the helicopter, helicopters for HealthNet. And then down here in the very bottom extreme of the apron is what they call T-hangers, relatively small planes, typically private, but there might be some corporate ownership in some of those. The purple locations, primarily blocks, are indications of where new additions to hangars would be constructed in the long term. The primary one here is we have an individual that's interested in quite a large box hangar, 200 feet by 200 feet, to be able to take large airplanes in there, to service them and so on. Additionally, the brown areas show some additional parking that would be available. This is referred to as the landside development plan. The airside development plan is the runway. You can still see the South Apron area here with just the current buildings constructed. And the primary runway, the only runway that's at the airport, runs from this location here up to this location. And right now, it's about 4,200 feet long. And that's good, but it's not good enough for the larger aircraft. And what we've seen in the past six months to two years is we now have a jet-based aircraft, and we have a number of what they classify as B-2 aircrafts, which are based upon the landing speed of the aircraft and the wingspan. Those two elements primarily determine the class of airport that you have. These are primarily corporate, 10, 15, as many as 20 passenger. Most of ours are in the 10 to 12 area. But they need more runway to land safely. And having a runway about 1,000 feet longer would greatly enhance the type and size of the aircraft that could land at Buchanan Upsher. We have a very unique airport in the state of West Virginia. It is almost always fog-free, and you can't say that about a very large number of airports around the state. Because of its location, it provides access both for HealthNet and for aircraft almost all the time. So it's, we are a very strong, we're in a very strong regional position to have this airfield. The blue shaded areas indicate areas that are going to require a substantial amount of fill in order to add on to this runway. Not only do we want to add on to the runway, but we also want to take the taxiways, those areas where you move an airplane to the end of the runway before takeoff, or you move it to the terminal after landing. Currently, you have to, what they call backtrack, on the runway itself. If a plane lands, it gets down to the end of the runway, it turns around on the runway, and comes back that runway. That's, FAA considers that a very high risk. They would much rather have a taxiway that's other than the runway, so the plane can immediately get off of the runway, onto the taxiway, and then come back to the terminal or reverse. So there's a lot of fill. The light brown areas are also areas that require fill. But the airport owns a piece of property here that's quite, has quite a hill on it, owns some property over here that is pretty hilly. So most of the fill is probably onsite itself. This plan is being developed by a division of Michael Baker Corporation called LPA Group from Florida. We're in the, we've got an advisory board, we're in the final stages of the plan, and sometime probably mid or late January, we anticipate having a public hearing. We will have a public hearing somewhere in that timeframe, showing these plans in detail plus a lot of additional information. So if you or anyone listening happens to be interested in what's happening at the airport, let me know, or let City Hall know, and we can get you on the list, make sure you know when that public hearing is. And that's all I have unless there's a question.
This doesn't require any acquisition of additional rights, does it?
Not in terms of property, but it might in terms of trees. Because when you extend the runway, you have to have certain slopes to be able to land and take off. And because of extending the runway to the west, there are some trees and some of the distant hills that probably need to be trimmed or cut down in order to give us the appropriate approaches and so on.
Maybe the wind will take care of it.
It's possible. Any others? Okay, thank you.
Is that all you have, Rich?
Yep.
Okay, that's good. Calling?
Thanks, Mayor. Most importantly, the final tariff letter has been filed with the West Virginia Public Service Commission. I think when I first started this process, with the memo that I gave you at the mid-October meeting, I said there would be 12 documents in addition to the tariff letters that would be filed. There ended up being 13 documents. They seem to manage to add something to the checklist each time. I think we're in full compliance with all of the PSC rules and regulations. I know we're in compliance with the state statutes. So barring any unforeseen, coming shot out of the blue by the PSC, those rates, the new rates will become effective on January 1st with that next January billing cycle. I've been working with Mr. Doss on the proposed lease agreement with the National Guard, and it's going to be a matter of a couple of weeks going back and forth with some counter-proposal language. There are some things that I think were basically offered up to us that were kind of boilerplate from other agreements that the Guard has done in other places that don't totally satisfy what we're doing here. References, for example, to rent being paid, and we're not paying rent, we are offering up resources in lieu of rent. The agreement does call, it's a tripartite agreement, meaning that it would involve our sublessy, being the Upsher County CVB, they would actually join in the agreement. I think there needs to be some language constructed that we haven't done yet, to shoot back to the Armory National Guards concerning what if there, what if at some point in the future, there wouldn't be the Upsher County CVB per se? Would there be another entity? We certainly want to have that discretion on behalf of the city to designate another entity. Those are just some of the things. I don't want to get into all of the boring details about it, but we are working on it. And I think Mr. Doss and I would hope to have a counter-proposal to everybody within the next two weeks. Remember, too, that since we are applying for a loan through the USDA, they too, as part of their checklist, need to see this entitlement that the city has to actually occupy those premises. So in addition to placating the Armory National Guard folks, we need to also make sure the federal government's on board with this on the loan front. So more to follow on that. Still working on the electrical ordinance as we look to 2013. I think there are three potential ordinances that we would start out with early in 2013, the first one being the electrical ordinance. Mr. Doss, a week or so ago, provided to me a copy of bath salts ordinance, and Chief Gregory may want to comment on this. And I'm certainly no, my science skills haven't really evolved since my sophomore year in undergraduate school, when I got out about 10 years ago, or maybe a little longer. But the point is that these folks that are manufacturing these bath salts are always one step ahead of the statutes which ban particular chemical configurations. And there are a couple of enterprises right here in Buchanan that are selling things that are technically not illegal as we speak. We would categorize them as laypeople, as these things being bath salts, but they're not technically illegal. Some states have authorized municipal ordinances, which would basically be tant them out to a civil penalty as opposed to a criminal penalty. Understand that we cannot criminalize something if the state legislature or the federal government hasn't authorized specifically municipalities to make something criminal. So what do I mean by a civil penalty? We, as a city, may, and I'm not 100% sure about this, I'm still researching the question, we may be able to refrain from issuance or pull an already issued municipal business license to people who are selling those kinds of products. That's something that we want to try to advance. I want to navigate that very carefully. I don't want us to get into a situation where somebody calls us to the rug on it, and we end up in court over something that won't hold legal water. But as I evolve to that point of being able to recommending to you, that I think this is something that would withstand a challenge, that's something that we're looking at. The other ordinance that is still in its infancy, and I really need to schedule with Michael Doss and both Chiefs Gregory and Tacy, is this first responder residency ordinance that we've been talking about off and on for a couple of months now. I want to make sure that Mitch and Matt are on the same page with this if we evolve to making that a requirement. And again, how far, what would the epicenter be? Would it be 10 miles? Would it be 15 miles? Those are the kinds of discussions that we'll need to present to council as that evolves. So lots of things on the play, but we are getting a few things done, too. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, everybody, and we'll see you in January.
Questions for David?
I got a question. David, what are the, when you talk about bath salts, what are the legal uses for them? What are the, what are the people using that for? On the bath?
Well, Chief Gregory knows everything there is to know about this.
Let's defer that question to Matt. How about?
I guess the 7:30. When you think of bath salt, it's not what typically would be marketed as a bathing product. The compounds that ladies will use to freshen up the bathroom, these are particularly manufactured to be synthetic cocaine. The specific...
The specific compounds have been isolated by the legislature, but therein lies the problem of the original bath salts that have made their appearance within the last year or two. They have evolved to the point now that they do not fall under the purview of the criminal law. So that's the dilemma that we face that if the legislature moves through the course of several months to get a bill enacted to identify certain compounds that is typically found within these chemicals and makes them illegal, that it no sooner becomes law and a chemist modifies the compound ever so slightly, and now it doesn't fall under the purview of what's been identified as illegal. And that's kind of where we're at in the state of West Virginia now. We're just, it's just kind of chasing, the law is chasing the chemical changes. So I've talked to Dave, I've talked to Michael about just our perspective on keeping up with this. And this is the feedback that we received from the lab. We've spoken with the lab because the procedure now, since the law specifically identifies a compound, is to appoint seizure or whenever we come into contact with these substances, we're to send them to the lab. Literally compare the compound to the database, what's illegal and what falls beyond the scope of the law. And we spoke with them about not only having the list of illegal substances, which is provided in the statute itself, but even some of what they've found otherwise that would be legal, the substances that have fallen beyond the scope of the criminal law. And their response to ascertaining about these specific compounds was that if you're seeking to identify them to make them illegal, just as it was done in the first place, you're basically exercising futility. That you will no sooner, it'll just be a vicious cycle, no sooner identify them, they'll change you again and again and again. So I think the, at least in the interim, from the city's standpoint, is to have a blanket provision and outlaw the sale of any of these types of substances that would, of course, they claim they're not for human consumption, but they are being marketed or sold as such, they're certainly being abused as such. And when that's the case, I think that's where using Clarksburg's ordinance, which I believe is just recently enacted, as an example, have some type of blanket provision that would just outlaw it completely, at least the city limits. And that's just the dilemma that we face. There's no legitimate use for any of it. The name is deceiving. It is, it is synthetic cocaine, even though it says not for human consumption, it's certainly behind the counter, behind the scenes, sold for human consumption and it's of use for human consumption.
When you say behind the counter, they don't actually have it in the aisles?
No, they're usually in a back room. I know our experiences with the last couple of businesses here in town that have operated in this manner, the substances now. We haven't had the bath salts to the degree that Clarksburg has. Location in Clarksburg had the bath salt. What we have here in town is what's known as potpourri. And there again, the name is deceiving. It's not the type of substance that makes your house smell good. This is legal, what they call legal weed. It goes by a number of names, everything from potpourri to K2 to spice. It's even being marketed with cartoon characters on the front of the packages now. But again, like bath salts, it is used for human consumption. It is detrimental to a person's, to a person's behavior. And we have seen a host of problems as a result of abuse on these. So as far as what we've identified in the stores here in McCann, we haven't found bath salts per se, as we've seen in other towns, but we do have quite issue, quite an issue with the potpourri.
What's their target market, Matt?
Well, I would, with the research around the packaging, Scooby Doo is the cartoon character that's on the, that's on the packaging. So, you know, whereas we used to see people in their late teens, early twenties abusing these substances, now we're seeing it at a young age, middle school age.
Do we as citizens or councils members, do we need to put pressure on the legislature to become more aware of the, you know, can't they adopt laws that would be all encompassing so that even if you identified a compound, that it would also, two weeks delay, you know, you have another compound? There ought to be some way to deal with this.
Yeah, I think, I would think that instead of isolating a particular compound, that some kind of clause that would focus on any derivative of such compound to make it more of a blanket provision would certainly be what would be in order. Because if not, we're just going to continuously be going around and around and around.
What's holding up the legislature to adopt this kind of clause?
That I don't know. I think that, I think it's just new territory, honestly, because the issue with these types of substances just really surfaced within the last couple of years. And so the first crack at it was where they started isolating compounds. And then that, it backfired when the chemist altered the structure. So I think that if they're well aware of what the issues are, I think that they are going back to the drawing board and looking. I know I've had a number of conversations with Bill Hamilton relative to this. So I do know that, you know, the problem is recognized with the substances and with the so-called loophole in the law. And I do believe it's being looked at on that end as well.
I would, I would, you know, ask all of us, all citizens in Upshire County and Buchanan and the state to really ask the legislature to fast track so that we can get ahead of this problem rather than simply see it devastate so many human lives.
Yeah, because, you know, we could pass the ordinance here, which, again, we would hardly support here in town, but that would just push it out of town. You know, they could open up shop 50 feet from the city limits and operate as long as they're within the loopholes of what the legislature have. But if we had something all encompassing statewide, we would take a more proactive approach to the problem.
Well, I encourage, I encourage all of us to contact the individuals that are the state representing us to really push something through that makes sense and will protect our, especially our youth, but everybody.
Couple of points, Mr. Thomas. The courts have been, become involved with this. This is not just a Buchanan or Central West Virginia problem, it's not just a West Virginia problem. This is a national, worldwide problem. And for the most part, states and federal courts have held that if you go too far and you say, well, gee, we're gonna, we're gonna make it illegal, anything that can give somebody some sort of high as a result of experiencing it, the courts have held those kinds of overly broad statutes to be void for vagueness. So there does need to be some specificity relative to the chemical compounds. The other thing that I've noted in some of the research, some of these chemical compounds come very close to other things that do have legitimate uses, such as some cleaning compounds, which, you know, might be advertising that there's opportunity out there to derive a high from those products, but essentially you could outlaw gasoline because there are kids out there that are huffing gasoline to get high. So the courts have said, look, you need to be very careful and very specific as you go forth with outlawing particular chemical compounds under an overly broadly drafted ordinance or statute. So we're going to try to be attentive to this. Again, the way I would see this possibly developing early in 2013 would not be to criminalize the activity of selling these products. We can't do that unless the state legislature or the federal government authorizes us to do it. But I think administratively, we could put some broader language in there that says, look, these particular products, the state legislature has said, we have the opportunity as municipalities to say anything that's unwholesome, unhealthy, unsafe, we can regulate. We find these things as a city council to be unhealthy, unwholesome, unsafe. And we're not going to permit business licenses to be issued to people who sell unsafe products such as that. Now, again, I'm not ready to draft that language yet. I want to see what some other communities around us, both within and without West Virginia are doing. I have one ordinance that Mr. Doss has given me out of Ohio to look at that we may be able to steal some things out of there, and that's where we are with it. I want to proceed carefully. I don't want us to get into a legal bind over something that's just kind of tossed together, but we're working on it.
Thanks for your information.
Chief, what are party pills?
Well, a party pill could be any number of things. You know, just as, this is probably one of as synthetic drugs, we see abuses. And again, like they've said with synthetic drugs, it's not just a Buchanan problem or a West Virginia problem, but, you know, a national problem, and that's the abuse of prescription medication. That's probably just as prevalent as just about anything else here in town. And, you know, there will be parties that are just giving these things out. They're called farm parties or pharmaceuticals. The pills themselves are called beans. So there's all kinds of slang terms that surround this in the subculture. That could be one thing. Another type of pills that I've encountered are ecstasy and a derivative, much more potent form of ecstasy, which is AMT. And I've seen people driven almost to the brink of death taking AMT.
I would assume that local business with a sign on the front door that says, we do not sell bath salts or party pills, that they would not be referring to pharmaceuticals, but perhaps to the ecstasy and all that sector?
Well, perhaps. I mean, if it's, if it's along the terms of synthetic drugs, it may be a synthetic drug in and of itself, just like potpourri or bath salts. Now, as far as ecstasy and AMT, it's very specifically a controlled substance and has been for a number of years. But it's typically used at parties, specifically raves, because of the heightened sensation that it gives to the body.
Thank you.
Okay. It brings us to correspondence. We have a couple of issues there. We've dealt with some resignations and a letter from the housing board. I'm going to ask for a motion to table these two items, D1 and D2, until our January 3rd meeting.
I'll move we table those items?
Second.
Motion made in the second. We'll have discussion on this subject in executive session later. All in favor, signify some saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it. Brings us comments and announcements on the other end tonight. Scott, you're first.
I'd like to, of course, wish everybody a happy holiday season of peace and the Christmas season and hope for prosperous and hopefully storm-free 2013. I'd like everybody to remind, to be, remember safety during the holiday season with fireplace safety, driving on winter roads. And also I'd like to ask the city engineer if he could look into the leak above my chair. There seems to be a leak in the roof above my chair. So if he can perhaps look into that, that would be fine. But with the smiles of council, I'll pass the baton.
Also, I'd like to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas, a blessed holiday season for you. I'd like to ask that you remember the children, remember the children in Newtown, Connecticut, remember their parents. Remember the heroic actions of the teachers in that school and of the first responders. Sometimes the first responders will have a harder time with these situations than even the parents do because they see it all. God bless them. Wish y'all a very safe holiday season.
Rich?
He said it all. Merry Christmas.
John?
May Christmas to everyone and another reminder relative to safety as we all are enjoying holiday parties or times with family and others, to remember not to operate a vehicle we've been drinking or celebrating in any way. It's one of the most avoidable things that we can do, ridiculous thing that we can engage in, and I think it's something we can all work harder to make sure we don't do.
Pam?
I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and have safe time with your families if you travel or whatever, and just remember Jesus is the reason for the season.
Amen. David?
I would echo what everybody else said, but I would also add to our residents and citizens and really everybody in the country, try to get out to your elected politicians and ask them to use some common sense and don't politicize everything that's out there. I mean, the fiscal cliff and, you know, we're looking at gun control and gun cultures and everything, but we need to, we need to have some common sense in our country. I'm really afraid we've become very divisive in many ways and we politicize everything. And it's time for us to step up the plate and quit doing that. And I echo what everybody said, have a great Christmas and a happy holiday season and be safe.
And I would also like to add nothing. It's all been said, I do wish each of you very happy holidays, very Merry Christmas. And we want to echo what Pam had to say about the reason we celebrate Christmas is the birth of Christ. And we should, we seem to let that get away from us at times, and I would encourage everybody to remember what the event's all about. And with that, we'll, I'll entertain a motion that we enter into executive session for West Virginia Code 698A4 for discussion personnel. So move. In a second, in a second. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. That mean, that vote means rest, you can leave.